Share some advice on that. The best of them on the. I have not got an idea.
U.S. Department.
U.K., which is basically originally a hopeless funding. Share. I need to get. Once you find your password.
Very good.
Yes.
But you have your own password. Very strong.
Using. I got a call.
passwords.
Oh, wow.
Have to.
Great.
And you had a good.
Time. Really. Thank you.
Yeah.
So.
You look good except for.
Yeah.
So much.
But it's like.
Two of them they were like.
Right.
I got.
I got one.
I got one.
Yeah.
One lighter.
They were.
I'm saying.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sitting up.
First.
They said last year.
Oh, yeah.
So you just.
All right.
Sorry.
Well, I started a little bit.
But I'm telling him they're forgotten.
I heard.
Yeah.
And I think already everybody else.
Struggling a lot.
It's.
It's.
He's happy.
Positive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's good.
I am.
He's gonna be like.
That's.
Here.
I need to do something.
Yeah.
I need for day now. I'm so sorry.
Well, it's.
You're.
You're.
Kind of.
What?
My question.
Oh, yeah.
It wants to go.
All right.
I don't want more.
You know.
Nine when I'm.
Let her.
Let me wait.
No, if you like.
I have.
I.
She will.
For.
That's.
I'm sure.
You know.
Quite.
I have.
Something. I'm married to very big. It's a lot.
Yeah.
Except a minute.
But.
I'm probably around so.
About quarter eight. Actually, suddenly there was nobody. There was nobody. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was like.
When I am.
My heart is out.
I always.
Need or.
From my.
Wow.
No, only time.
All with the. Resturants.
Super.
One.
Twenty.
Totally.
Move.
With the contributing annual dollar.
Oh, thank you.
And.
Thanks.
I'm.
You heard it all.
Next.
I'm.
No.
Hours.
Yeah. So kids always come up to me and they go.
Are those your real feeding question?
I saw.
Oh, that's your real feed.
You're playing.
There.
That's.
God.
Hey. That's all in here.
No, you don't.
I hold those girls.
Exactly. It's probably.
I.
I'm driving around with something there.
Oh, he had a little. Sorry. We had so much. I knew you were making.
Be.
Oh, my gosh.
That sounds.
He's walked up.
To my family.
Yeah.
Well.
I want.
It just kind of taught me.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes.
I remember.
What kind of dog is that?
I remember.
I started on this.
You.
Well, sorry.
Maybe she could.
Oh, gee.
Better access.
No.
It's just.
We.
But.
I can't. But he'll be back. So you see I'm bouncing around on the others.
Yeah. Land of straight.
Definitely.
Because.
Don't.
I've seen.
Yeah. Well.
I know.
That was.
For good.
Good.
Oh, my.
You know.
They call it a bat.
Yes.
It's already.
You know.
Back.
For her.
Is.
I just said.
Well, that's.
And they.
On this.
That's.
I don't know about it.
Okay.
It's.
You bet.
I'll.
It's all.
Because.
That you know.
That's.
We don't.
Now.
So.
Yeah.
Well, um.
It's.
I mean, like.
You said.
This.
Surely.
Probably.
It's.
Where.
So.
Okay.
They're gonna.
Back.
It's your.
Only.
Like.
You all.
Wedding.
Very.
I don't.
That's.
You know.
Good.
It's.
Not sure.
So.
No.
Well.
We have a destiny.
It's just.
They're.
But.
The.
You know.
So.
I'm not.
I'm.
She.
We're.
Provided.
It's that.
Which.
That.
Who's.
Nurse.
Well, that.
They can.
These men.
Oh.
So.
United.
I didn't.
Have to.
Rent.
It.
Was.
Those.
So.
Contact.
I have no age.
Who?
Well, now.
Wait.
Maybe.
Your.
Number.
On.
That.
Yeah.
Me.
First.
May.
Age.
Number.
Yeah. Yeah. I was. Accidentally.
Well, they're all.
Oh, I should.
Probably.
I didn't do a.
That.
Oh.
That did all.
Talk.
Just.
Retweet. And what? I wondered. Did they get cut off when they were copying?
Yes. That's what.
That looks like.
It's not.
Yeah.
There's.
There's.
When.
I was.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I said.
Thank you.
And.
Yeah.
Has to be.
With our water tower.
And then.
The ones that we have.
On.
The.
Right.
The whole.
Nation.
Forever.
But.
War.
Saying.
Okay. I'd like to call the Ancock Town Council meeting for November seventeenth to order. Uh. Debbie, can we have the roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Figgy.
Present.
Councilmember Grub. Councilmember Holdren.
Present.
Councilmember Marino.
Present.
Councilmember Knock.
Here.
Councilmember Pettit.
Present.
And Mayor Foskey.
Present. Thank you.
Okay. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh. The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance. Behind. Into the. Will withstand. One. Individuals. And local. That appreciate. No.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yeah. Uh. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. Uh. We need to add under council action, an item for uh voting in an additional check signer for our bank account. So that we have three that can sign in town. And then I would also like to add the contract with the Berkeley Group for the Town Manager Recruitment Services contract.
Okay. Thank you. Uh. Second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh. The motion carries. Thank you. Uh. There is no consideration. Uh. Excuse me. Consideration of the minutes from October twenty seventh. Do we have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Uh. Discussion. If anybody's not already contacted Debbie about corrections. Any other further discussion?
Well, I. So I. I know that we talked about changing Mr. Delaney's name. Is it? So it's. Even though it's in the printed packet? Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay.
And Mr. Monson also.
Okay. Any uh? Any other discussion about the minutes? All in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I think motion carries. Thank you. Uh. There is no public hearing tonight. Uh. The public hearing. Um. It's correction. There was a public hearing scheduled for next week and it was inadvertently put in the newspaper because our normal meeting is next week. This has been moved up a week, but the public hearing was scheduled for the um. Uh. The water tower release. Uh. Electronic lease for the water tower. Uh. That will occur at the December meeting. Uh. So don't. There is no. I think we did put a correction on the website, but do not go by the. It was in the newspaper incorrectly that one month, one week. So don't. But. Please don't show up next week. There will be no public hearing. Uh. There is no public presentation. Um. Actually, I'd like to. I'm gonna reverse the order a little bit because we have. Uh. I want to council action. I'm gonna do E here first, if that's okay with everybody. Uh. Uh. Consider action regarding a contract for an interim town manager. Uh. Mr. Earl Mathers is sitting here. Uh. He is uh. Are gonna be our new interim town manager. He works for Berkeley Group. Uh. And he comes to us from a. Huge resume of experience with towns all over Virginia. And I guess the. Why? What? Montana and North Carolina, correct? Yes. Right. So he is. He is. He is a retired, you know, professional town, you know, town and county manager. Uh. And he's gonna be working for us on a part time basis. Uh. Definitely not full time. He lives in Stanton, so he'll give us a couple of days, uh, probably every other week and then he'll do a lot of stuff remotely. So, um. We. We approved his, uh, you know, hiring him contingent on the uh. On a. You know. On the contract. And I have the contract here, so I. Uh. I need a motion to uh accept the contract from Berkeley Group for interim town service manager services. Somebody wanted.
Second.
Uh. Do we have a second? Uh.
Yeah.
Oh, we all. Second. Any discussion on that? I think we've all met him. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Well, that's done. Okay.
Opposed. You get to do the work.
That's right. All right. Well, thank you. Yeah. Congratulations. You are our interim town manager. Thank you. Uh. Uh. The next item is along with this. We've. Um. Lisa just put it on the thing is the uh. The. The council has agreed to hire a uh. Uh. The Berkeley Group that Mr. Mather works for to do our town manager recruitment services. Uh. And this is a uh. A long process. Uh. We've been through it several times before and we've had help before with this and we can. We can feel that we need help again. Uh. As I've gotten heard really good things about this group from all over Virginia. They've done a lot of work. Uh. So I need a motion to hire them. Uh. They. They. They're gonna charge us a one time fee of fifteen grand, fifteen thousand to help us over the next four to five months to hire somebody. That's pretty standard. They've given us a. You know. They've given us a discount because we've. We're using one of their employees as a. As an interim. So I need a motion to accept this uh. Contract.
One clarification. It's the fifteen thousand dollars plus advertising charges.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. Right. Correct. Yeah. So I need a motion to accept this contract.
So moved.
Second.
Uh. Any further discussion? Uh. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Carries. I'll sign those both and pass them on. Okay. Um. Back to. Uh. Sorry to take it out a little out of order. Uh. Back to council discussion. Uh. Discuss the appropriation of the project for benches, trash cans, alley lighting. Uh. Not sure how much we want to get into this now, but um.
I did want to mention that um in the Hill Studio recommendations uh that are found on the packet information, I think from January's meeting, twenty twenty four. The recommendation shows a wooden bench and not metal benches. We had discussed this among the council members at that point in time and agreed that that um kind of appearance was more appropriate to the town square than a more modern appearance. We thought that those would be more useful in the commercial and other areas of town. But for the town square itself, we wanted uh wooden benches similar to the ones in the Hill Studio uh study that we received. So I would just suggest that uh we consider that instead of the recommendation for the benches in this packet.
Well, the. The um. I guess we're discussing the appropriation up to up to twenty five thousand. This is part of the CIP uh project, you know, two thousand six project that's already approved, you know, in our CIP. Uh. You know. What? What? We planned on doing this. So I guess the question is not specifically each item, but whether we want to approve the the amount to go forward and get. I. You know. We can.
Like to table it for a little bit until we get some things figured out and a new town manager in here helping us. Um. If. If that's okay. I don't think there's a rush to put a bench down there, is there?
Uh. Well, we have. We have two benches and a bunch of stuff sitting back here already. I'm not sure exactly. Yeah.
No idea what those are for.
Yeah. There. Yeah. So anyway. Sunset Park. Okay. But that's part of this thing. So let's. Well. No, I have no problem. Is that the council's uh?
Does everybody kind of think that that might make sense?
Yeah. It's no hurry on that. Uh. I think we also get need to get a final plan for Sunset Park to get some. Uh. And I think I was gonna ask the waterfront committee to come up with. We need to get some kind of protection. Bollards up or something to protect the what we just put in, you know, the concrete and everything. It wasn't supposed to be just additional parking. It was supposed to be a park area with seating.
Right.
Yeah. So. We need to follow up with that. Any further discussion?
One. Question about the benches. Um. I. I agree with the concern about the heat of sitting on a metal bench in the summer. But I also wonder about what can be done to have to avoid the risk of splinters from a wooden one because. That could potentially be worse than the metal. So that's just something to to consider as we're going forward.
Well, we. We need to come up with a total plan and present to the council. All right. Uh. And. Okay. All right. Well, that was discussion item anyway. We weren't. But I'm sorry. We weren't supposed to act on that of. Uh. Anyway. All right. Uh. Council action. Uh. Consider action on the wayfinding signage.
So what? What is the action on this?
Oh. That's what I was gonna ask. I think there is gonna be none, but let Sarah pick it. Yeah.
We are closer, but we're still hashing through what V dot will allow and what makes sense for the town and trying to come up with something that is an intersection between those two. Country conflicting issues. We're. We're closer, but it's still underway. Sarah, do you have a uh date that that might be completed? Because I know this has been going on for quite a while. Yeah. I'm. I'm hoping by possibly by the next meeting, by the December meeting, if we can get people collected.
Okay.
Do you? Do you know if that's? Is that in the capital improvement funds?
Yes. It. It is.
Is it the interpretive signs or?
That's different from interpretive.
Okay. That's what I thought. So I don't.
I think we. Uh. I think we're holding off on the interpretive signs. We hadn't decided what we want to do with that. Yet.
Not for wayfinding?
No. There. There. Uh. We need. I. I think Mr. Math. Earl's gonna look into where. We're a little confused about once where the some of the. If it's ARPA funding or capital improvement funding. So we need to get. And. Capital. It is in capital. Yeah. Okay. Well.
Yeah. So it wasn't itemized.
Yeah.
So I wasn't sure. Okay.
Coming out of. Yeah.
Probably in the budget, you know. It's like the capital improvement for the next two budget cycles after this one.
I can look at that real quick.
Yeah.
Keep talking.
I'm thinking it was in twenty twenty six.
Well, that should be on here too.
No. That's in the budget materials.
That's matches what the code says currently.
Right, and if you, yeah, okay. So I just want to make sure we're clear on that. I don't have any other issues with it. My gosh, I'm running. All right, so we're going to put this on the agenda for next week, next month. And there's really no need to go back to the attorney. We're in compliance, is that correct? Yeah, okay. All righty. Okay. Okay. Item C is consider a resolution to establish a new bank account for HRSD billing and funds transfer transactions. There was some question about will you even need a resolution? But that never hurts to have one because it looks like we're going to need a separate account to channel these funds to HRSD. So we need a motion to set up. And there's a couple of the questions we need to talk about HRSD billing after we get off this. But do we have a motion to set up another account? Yeah.
Do we have to read the resolution, don't we? Or do we?
There's some question about whether we even need a resolution. But I don't know why, to set up a new bank account? Yeah, that's what I thought, too. I don't know why we would have. We have several bank accounts here. We don't come in here and ask.
Don't we have, already have a bank account?
They want a separate bank account. Debbie can explain this.
We do not have a separate one now?
We do, but it's not.
The HRSD billing is not live yet. And when the HRSD billing goes live, they're collecting for the sewer. They're billing for everything, water, sewer, trash. They will only keep the sewer portion of that and they'll have to sweep the cash for.
For that account.
Out of it or into it?
Into, out of it or into it, correct. Yes.
The question that comes up for policy is that HRSD is going to take over billing. The question has been brought up that we are going to accept payment at our town office here for payment. There are two questions that came up. The broader one, whether we should even accept payment, which is, I think, obvious. The second one was whether we will accept cash. Okay, that's come up a couple of times. They will be able to, can you, can you tell, they can go to Walmart, correct?
That is correct. They can pay at Walmart, at the customer care center cash. All they would have to have is their account number and checks. And they could do everything there. We could have a portal here for them to do payments for credit cards. But cash and checks.
Right.
Would much easy, would be processed much easier at Walmart. Because they, Walmart's already set up to do it at their customer center.
And Walmart's is actually open.
And then they would get the full revenue and just give us what, instead of us having to pull it out.
Yeah, but people could still come in here and pay by check or credit card to the office.
Checks are questionable because it would be the same process as cash. The only thing that would be clean for us would be the portal for the credit cards.
All right, well, this is a policy decision that I think council needs to make because, you know, we have, we need to be user friendly. So I need, you need to weigh in about what you want to do. We, everybody's aware that we've been embezzled twice over the last 25 years from cash coming in. And it seems like cash is not maybe the best idea to accept anymore. But that's the trend of the future. I'm just, that's, it's up to you all what you want to do.
I always pay my water bill with a check. So you're saying from now I cannot pay it in the office? I'd have to go to Walmart?
Well, that's what we're deciding now.
Or you can mail it in.
Or you can mail it.
So, yeah, we're deciding that.
Everything will go to HRSD. It'll be on their billing sheet that'll say, permit your payment here.
There may still be one check somewhere, yeah.
Right.
So the first issue is that we're going to continue to take some kind of payments at this office. Are we in agreement in that? Or do we want to?
But you're saying they're only credit cards?
No, no, we, no, just, let's get one thing first, that we're going to accept some kind of payment. We haven't decided what yet. But we're not going to close this office to payments for business.
No.
Okay, we agreed on that?
The hesitation, though Debbie and I were discussing it, was the amount of staff time it's going to take to reconcile the books at the end of the night so HRSD can pull their cash out and we make sure we retain ours. And so how much more additional work will that be? I don't know. And I'm not saying I'm for it or against it. I'm just throwing out the concerns from staff that I've heard so far.
When will the billing go live? It's still a month away, correct?
Until all the meters.
I would say a couple of months until all the meters popped out.
I personally am opposed to not taking, I think we should take checks. There's no, I don't understand that personally. That, I mean, checks or credit card, cash, I, it's up to council, but it is problematic. I don't know how much cash we get. I mean, most people that pay by cash are going to have to drive here anyway. They're not walking, I don't think. So they can drive to Walmart, I don't know. And they're open, they're open twice as much as we are, yeah.
How often does HRSD require that you send in the payments that you collect?
Daily.
Okay, that's the problem.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and that's, that's what they were explaining to me, that the cash would have to be in the bank every day in order, like, one of the things she said to me is when they pay HRSD, they basically are fronting that money for us. Whether the check bounced, whether the credit card is rejected, whether they overdraw or whatever, we won't have to deal with any of that. We still have our money. But with the cash and the checks being deposited into our account and being swept, then that puts that burden back on us as well.
And even, even checks, though, for you? You're not going to be able to, you're going to have to dump it in our general and move it over, aren't you?
Correct.
Well, you wanted a special account. You dump it in the special.
But they can only scan checks into our general account.
Correct.
Okay.
So I would really like to, to lay out a very specific, like, I can give you exactly how HRSD and Matt and myself worked through it with them. It's, it's going to be a learning curve for everybody.
Well, we don't need a decision tonight, correct? Can you give us?
We don't need a decision tonight, but I think if we, I would like to, if everybody wants this office open like the way it was before, we can do it that way with maybe the opportunity to say, look, this is just way too much. And we could switch back to, you know, them going to Walmart or.
So you're, you're saying that if we, if we did away with cash, we still have the problem with checks?
Yes.
And they're pretty, it's exactly the same, basically.
Correct.
We'd have less trouble with people embezzling from us, but we would have.
Correct.
Yeah, so, so the one option would be to get rid of cash and checks and just take credit cards here. But that's an option, but I'm not saying I'm, okay, so.
It's just for water and sewer.
Just for, yeah.
That's correct, not taxes.
Taxes and everything else, yes, okay. All right, so.
By the next meeting, I can have a laid out.
Yeah, maybe that's a good idea. Thank you, yeah, thank you. I think this is, you know, needs a little discussion and.
Just a brief report, you know, why this is purpose and what some of the potential glitches include.
Right.
So, yeah, so you give us a staff recommendation as well? Okay, thank you.
That'd be good. And, you know, I think it is important to point out, there are people who use cash only and do not have access to credit cards, do not have access to checks and.
But we're not cutting them off from paying because they can go, still go to Walmart and that's open three times more than we are and.
Well, you can also get like a preloaded debit card. People don't understand that either. I mean, you can go to the bank. If you don't have credit or if you don't have credentials to open a checking account, you can still get a preloaded debit card, just like a checking account. And you can load it with money or you can have your check deposited on it. There's a lot of ways around it now if you just don't have a checking account.
I just don't want to make it more difficult.
I understand.
Yeah, all right.
I have the same concern.
Yeah, well, let's think about it and we'll get our staff report next, next, next month. Okay, thank you, Debbie.
That's okay. Do you want to go ahead and do the resolution for the, I mean?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's.
If we don't open it, we don't open it, but at least it's covered.
Yeah, I think it's, let's, I don't think we personally need that, you know.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, and once we learn more.
Yeah.
And once we get Earl up and running, he'll be able to say whether or not that's really our best move or if it's required. You don't think it's required to do a resolution?
I, no, I think administrative actions, issue, assuming we need to go forward with it. But probably segregating the funds at least in the short term is a good idea.
Yeah.
Question, do you have a microphone?
You didn't give it to him. Oh, yeah.
Okay, because the people on the Zoom are not probably hearing you.
Sorry about that.
I need to go up here. We need.
Okay. Are we, are we okay on this? Okay, so we're going to hear back on this. We're not going to get any money in the next month on this, so we can wait till the December meeting. That's only what, well, it's a month away, yeah. All right. Council Action D is consider the letter of no objection from the town to the Coastal Square Village water line. This is in your package. It's pretty self-explanatory. They're, well, they're, they want to, as you know, we voted to supply water to the new, this is the new development going out behind Food Line, not, not in the town, but we did agree to provide them water. They wanted an agreement to say that we don't have any objection for them to run the line from our, basically the water tower down, what street is it? Hall Street, not the water, Down Hall Street and then boring Down Hall Street. They're not going to tear the street up and then come across Market and then go down the field there, the Eller property to the town limits. And then they would be responsible for the rest of it. So they're not talking about tearing any streets up. They're just talking about underground boring. They would assume all the costs and everything. So it's, it's up for your consideration. I unfortunately do not know any more details than that.
Mr. Mathers, have you had a chance to look at this to see?
I understand that this will generate a significant amount of new revenue and it appears that all the costs would be borne by the contractor.
Right, as far as I know, yeah, yeah, definitely. There's no, yeah, we're not paying a dime for this.
This is the second way to service the people we said we'd service.
Yeah, we've committed to service the people. We can't, the question is that they're boring it. We're not going to, you know, I would be concerned if they were digging up streets because they never get repaired like they should. And they're going across and they're actually going on, cross onto the property that, that the developer is involved with as well, the Eller property. So they're really not, they're mostly on private property, so. It's up, and I don't know when this will happen. I think he's just getting, he's trying to get all his permits in place. They're still quite a ways off before this, I don't think you're going to see.
Are you looking for us to approve? Can you sign this or?
Yeah, it's, the objection, it's in here in your packet. You know, they want me to sign, I need approval to sign this and authorized by the council to sign this. Do we have a motions to such?
I will make a motion that you sign the letter of no objection for utility bore and water line installation to serve Coastal Square Village.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We carried five, five, five zero, okay. All right, we've also, we've also acted on the contract. Okay, committee reports.
Wait a minute, you, we also amended it with the check signer.
Check signer.
Oh, that's all right, yeah. We need currently, Sarah and I are the only authorized signatures on the account. We require two signatures every time we write a check. If one of us gets hit by a bus, we're not going to be able to write a check. So, and Mr. Mathers is probably not going to be here long enough to go through the whole process of sitting around, you know, changing checks. Or we asked for Lisa's agreed to be the third check signer for, until we get a new town manager permanently in.
Unless somebody else really wants.
Unless somebody else wants to do it. They're probably not going to be needed very often, but our policy requires two, two sign, two signatures on each check. So unless somebody else wants to do it, do we have a motion to approve Lisa to be a third check signer?
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, so we'll have to get together. I need to come with you and you need to go with us. We don't, and it'll probably be, I'll try to set that up for Friday or Monday of next week. Okay, all right.
Do you want me to do it, Fletcher, or are you going to call the bank?
Why don't you do it and set it up for Friday or Monday?
Okay.
Okay, we can meet, if that's okay with you, thank you. All right, now we got on committee reports. Planning Commission, Cindy?
Yes, the Planning Commission met this month and had a group convene and can't remember the name of the event space.
Lavanna's or something?
Yes, yes. Then it had a really terrific turnout. We had, I would guess, 35 or 40 people there to participate and give input for the comprehensive plan that the Planning Commission is working on. Casey is in the audience. She has generously spent a lot of time collating all of the comments, putting them together for the Planning Commission to review at their next meeting and plans to have an additional meeting. I'm not sure if that's been scheduled yet.
No, we're going to have a workshop with only two members, Greg and I. We're doing a Northeast Neighborhood Workshop next Monday, but then we will do another big one open to the whole community. And at this point, I'm thinking that we might take the January meeting to do it since we, at that point, we don't have a ton of stuff that we, other stuff that we have to do. So what we'll do is the same thing. We might be able to even do it in here, I don't, I'm not sure. But it worked out really well and the amount of information that we gathered is phenomenal. You know, when I'm, I'm still, I just got some more material from Jim, so I'm, I'm still collating material. But, but it's, we learned a lot from it already.
Yeah, it was a very good experience, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, lots of positive comments.
Is there a December Planning Commission meeting?
I have no idea.
He's going to focus on water.
Okay.
Oh, he's not there.
He's running a meeting. He can speak to it more than I give anything one second. No. Everything he's doing is talking about water and all, and install this sort of management, stormwater management. Someone from DEQ is going to be there. Anyway, that's the theme of the meeting is where it's just sort of a, a set of presentations and discussion about water issues.
Okay.
So I really do encourage attendance, anybody who wants to come. I think there's a lot, a lot to think about as we know every time it rains.
Any questions for about Planning Commission? Okay, the meeting is on December?
December 1st.
First, okay, next. Okay, great, okay. All right. Economic Development, Lisa?
We meet again December 17th at 6 o'clock right here.
Okay. Thank you. Commission, Community Reports on Hancock Main Street.
Okay, so on Hancock Main Street, applied for a downtown investment grant and we received money specifically allocated to turn around and do public facing facade grants for our downtown businesses. They were available from $500 to $5,000. We had 18 applicants and we were only able to fund nine. This represents an investment of $35,000 into our downtown area. I will say that the, the total number of requests totaled $63,000. Unfortunately, we couldn't fund everybody. But given the strong demand, we plan to seek additional Virginia Main Street support, hopefully through the same grant next year for continued further improvements for our downtown businesses. One of the strong themes of the applications was power washing and so, and window washing. And so we're, what, what we'd like to do is figure out a way that we can help facilitate some of these storefronts, getting these services done, at least at a discount rate. Maybe we can talk to somebody about coming in and doing so many properties for, you know, for a discount per property. So this is something that we're going to venture into, seeing how we can help out the businesses that are calling out for that particular need. So we have completed five murals and one mosaic and we are pitched, we have pitched a series of articles to the Eastern Shore Post on all of those public art initiatives. We are also working on planning our next three educational sessions for businesses as part of our OMS newest initiative, which is Open for Business, which is a business recruitment and retention program to fill vacant storefronts in downtown in Hancock, as well as keeping our current business community engaged and giving them keys to continue to thrive. Through a Virginia Tourism Grant, we are, just got a billboard up on Route 13 in Eden, Maryland. We, per the grant requirements, it had to be 50 miles away from our locality. So Salisbury was about where we could start hitting. And so this was the one that's available and that'll be up for the next three months. We are working, we've sent out our annual appeal letters for fundraising. We're also going to be, you'll be seeing us do some posts on social media about that, trying to really get a campaign going to get more people interested in supporting us. Social media, our spooky specials post on Halloween for the Hancock Weekend and Halloween, we, which was the 24th to 26th, we earned over 14,000 plus views. We asked restaurants to submit photos of their spooky food or drink and we had full participation from downtown restaurants. Due to its popularity, that we will be repeating this concept with Christmas in Hancock and those are all partnerships with OBCA. And we are, we've purchased or sponsored a tree on the lawn at Kerr Place and we'd like our tree to shine with the light of our local businesses. And we've asked all businesses to provide us, if possible, with anywhere from one to five ornaments of something, it could be like something that they have specialty made with their logo on it or it could be something that shouts out to what type of business they are. Let's say it's the bakery and they've got little rolling pins and donuts. So that's kind of what we're thinking of, of a nice way to decorate our tree, supporting all of our businesses. I'm done.
Any questions? Main Street, any questions for Main Street?
Yes, I do have a question. Can you give us an example of the facade grants that you're talking about? Like what would a business do?
So it would have to be exterior, so it had to be storefronts, exterior, exterior building. And so it could, pressure washing wasn't eligible item, but some people are like replacing windows and trim and, and wood and stuff. What was some of the other ones that were in there?
Some of them are repointing bricks.
Yeah, repointing bricks. These are all things that are really helpful, not only to help revitalize the storefronts and stuff, but to really, you know, keep our, keep us going so we don't fall into more disrepair. So we wish we could give everybody money.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I do. I'm curious if there is any movement on some of the vacant storefronts or that you can talk about.
Well, we know we have new owners of the Red Queen Gallery and they, I think they are one of the recipients of the grant and I think they're going to start doing some renovations in there. Same thing with Jamie Niles. I think he's working on the Wise Drugstore Building. I don't know of any new businesses coming in at this point, except for Bread and Butter, who's going to be taking over, over on King Street. Yeah, Vinnie's old, Vinnie Arada's old pizza place. And I think she will be doing pizza as well. She's actually related to the guy who opened Driftwood and Moss, they're brother and sister. So that's kind of fun, a little family duo downtown.
Okay, any other, anything for? Yeah, anybody, yeah, anybody else? Okay, thank you about that. All right, Historic Hancock School?
The Champagne and Oyster Event was on Saturday and went really well. I was there, it was a very nice evening. Maurice did the food, Bayside Jazz gave us the music. Chester Jackson was Chester Jackson with the auction. It was, it was a good night. The Artisan Guild Tour will include the school with people who have studios there as well as a number of other people who'll be in the center space on the Friday and Saturday, the 28th and 29th, which is next week. And then Wine Wednesday will be on December 3rd and the Eastern Shore Art League will have new art featured in the gallery. Oh, fun. And, and let me back up and say, first thing is, thank you again from the school to the council for the vote at the last meeting to work on the capital issues.
Any questions for? Okay, Sale 250, who's doing, who's that?
Okay, we met last Friday. We are breaking into small groups so that we don't have to take up the whole committee time to dive into advertising our activities to fundraising. I've been compiling a list of all the events that we're going to be doing and at which location they'll be occurring. Debbie's really been working on finalizing the grant for the, the marketing side of it, which is a 20,000, well, it's a $10,000 grant from the state, which requires a one-to-one match. Hopefully we'll get, it's due December 5th, we'll get it in and we'll get fully funded. That'll be helpful. We are, been working with Amy Higgins, who is, is doing our, doing our marketing plan with us. And she's already started drafting sponsorship packets to send out in the community, save the dates for social media, working with the website people. So a lot of movement there. And I think that was kind of the stuff. Did I miss anything, Debbie?
Meeting with the, at the Thursday with the.
Fireworks man.
Yeah.
So Debbie's going to meet with the firework guy, I think the fire marshal potentially.
Fire marshal Cory and Rick.
Yeah, so we're tentatively scheduled to have the fireworks over at HOS, Historic in Hancock School. And the board has approved us and now we're just making sure that we've got the space we need, I'm assuming, for what we want to do.
Okay, any, any questions about, we're going to get a lot more information about. I guess we'll get a, I guess calendar's going to, you know, events will be, January start really coming together. We can get a list of council and see what, exactly what's happening. Okay.
And we are, we're looking for volunteers.
Oh, yeah, you say that. All right. Public comment time. Mark Sinclair.
Good evening, Mark Sinclair, Rainway Circle, just outside of town. First thing I'd like to talk about this evening is the wayfinding signs. You know, I find it interesting, anytime you get the state government or the federal government involved in a project, it gets so convoluted. I really didn't understand it when they said we couldn't even put a sign saying our bathrooms, our brand new bathrooms are right here, but we couldn't put a sign there for them. And now I understand that we can't even have a sign saying Little League Field's this way. I don't understand that. Little League leases that property, they maintain that property, they run a major asset for this town. And I think it's insulting if you tell them they can't put Little League on their sign. I just think that's wrong. And I know it's not the town doing it, I know it's the state, but I'd rather not even have a sign for Little League if, if you can't put their name up there. I just think that would be, uh, wrong to do it. Second thing I'd like to comment on, I've been coming to these meetings now for probably four years. I speak probably three out of four meetings. And in every meeting, I think that every member of this council has shown me the courtesy and the attention that a speaker in front of this, this council deserves. I've never found anything that you've said to be insulting. I've never found anything that you've said to be degrading. And certainly I've never had an occasion to see any of you try and stop people from speaking their mind. In fact, more times than not, people get up here and they have a three-minute limit and they'll go on for four and a half, five minutes and you don't stop them. People will raise issues from the, from the audience and you don't stop them. You give them every opportunity to voice their opinions. At least that's my opinion. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Rosemary Perrow.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to go over the cash and reserves. And I don't know if you noticed it, but on page 95, it says the cash and reserve report through October 31st, 2025. Those numbers are exactly the same as the cash and reserves through September 30th, 2025. So I'm assuming that was a, you know, a little bit of a mix-up there. But I want to go over the numbers just so we're all clear as to what's what. And I guess this is the September numbers. The checking is 744, 427. Now, those are our operational funds for running the town. Reserves only, no ARPA, are $4,725,866. Then apparently the town is a co-insurer with the insurance company and we are required to keep reserves as part of our insurance policy. Those reserves come to $2,864,168, which gives us a net reserves of $1,861,698. When we take out the 800,000 that we've committed to the HOS, we're down to reserves of $1,61,698. Now, that's not so much money. And I think we all know we can burn through that money really fast. So I ask all of you, because we do tend to go over capital projects quite a bit. I do tend, you know, I do want to ask you to be very, very conscious of how we commit future monies. And, you know, we're talking about wayfaring signs, we're talking about new lights. That money will just dwindle, dwindle, dwindle. And with the likelihood of state cutbacks and federal cutbacks to the state, you know, I don't think there's going to be a lot more money of any substantial size coming down the pike. So I would say be careful because in the future, the only way you're going to be able to get money is to either raise taxes or do assessments. The other thing I'd like to say for the Northeast Playground Basketball Court, one of the acrylic backboards broke. Get an aluminum backboard for both of them. They're cheap, they work, they won't break. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That's already in the works, yeah. Backboard. Okay. Glenn Smith? That's already in the works, yeah, backboard. Okay, Glenn Smith?
Glenn Smith, 12 Market Street. Comment on two things. You were talking about the funding with the HRSD, the billing. I don't know if you want to look into Zelle or Venmo. I use that with my tenants who don't have checks but have checking accounts, and instead of dealing with cash, it's immediately deposited into your checking account, and there's two records being sent to you. One via email and one via your online statement, which you can see. So Venmo and Zelle, you could, those are two payment options for people with checking accounts who don't use checks, but, you know. The other thing was, you spoke about the metal benches in the park. I live directly across the street from that, from, which Town Square, sorry, I call it gazebo park, but Town Square Park. And I remember wooden benches several years ago, right after graduation, all ended up in the harbor. Okay? So, I know you can buy commercial metal benches that are coated with, with rubber, which are not hot, and they, and they are, they don't degrade from the sun. You just, you have to find them in park equipment catalogs. They would be a little heavier to carry, and you might be able to mount them permanently. And you don't have to worry about splinters. And they don't get hot. My second thing is, a third thing is, I spent three hours this weekend at the Northeast Park. Half, hour and a half each day with my grandkids, and it's appalling that the basketball is broke, the backboard hasn't even been up a month, and it's broken, it's vandalism. We have cameras up there, so I, I hope somebody's going to be paying the price for that and not the taxpayer for the replacement. Okay? Also, when the planning was done for that park, who ever thought you could put glass backboards in that park? That's very lacking. I mean, very lacking. I know they're not glass, they're whatever, they're tempered, or, but I was there, and the wind is blowing, and the pieces are all falling out. So whoever cleaned up the original mess should have knocked out all the glass, so that there's not a mess every day. Okay? The other thing is, the Northeast Park, again, I live across the street from Town Square Park. I appreciate the fact that the town comes by almost every other day and cleans that park. It looks immaculate. It is immaculate. I don't understand why the Northeast Park can't look like that. You've got razor grass coming up through the mulch, leaves being accumulated in the mulch, people literally are tripping on those mounds of leaves. My wife spent a half hour picking up trash out of the grass while we were up there, and then the next day she was pulling razor grass out of the mulch. Now, if a resident can do that when they're there with their kids, why can't town employees do that? Thank you.
Thank you. Casey Greer.
Casey Greer, 74 Market Street. I just wanted to speak for a moment about the search for the new town manager. And what I'm hoping, I don't know what kind of process you all have planned, but what I'm hoping is that you might think about a more, a slightly more expanded search committee, so it's not strictly town council. Because there's a lot of people in the community who are active, who have a lot of government experience and other kinds of experience, who could really be helpful in this search process. I also hope that you will also, when you get to the point where you've got three finalists, two or three finalists, and you're bringing them in, that you will do some kind of public meet and greet with an opportunity for that person to present their work in the past, and maybe a PowerPoint with an overview of their resume, a look at what their work is in the past, and an opportunity to take questions from residents. I think you would be really well-served to open up the process, open up that process to some extent. And I think that, and I'm actually, what I'm doing is copying what happens in the academy, right, what my experience is more, or in museums. So you really want, you want an opportunity for there to be broader, broader feedback and thoughts about the town manager. I think that the town manager is, things are, there's a lot of stuff going on in town, and they need to be able to interact with a wide variety of people. So, that's all. Thanks. Also, please come in December to the Planning Commission meeting. Like I said, we're going to focus on water. And I think it's going to really be an interesting session. Thanks.
Thank you. Jay Miller.
Jay Miller, 79 Market Street. It was sad to hear that you have already okayed the letter that's going out to whom it may concern for, had to do with the water going to Coastal Square. And, but I think that what you're doing is you're overlooking some potential unintended consequences of where this, of the root of how this water is going. And now Matt's not here, and I'm sure he was involved with, with this. You're sending the water right through the property that you just denied the, the application for rezoning. One of the criteria, I think that you used, the excuses that you used to, to not okay this property, was the use of water. But look at what you're doing. You're, you're running the water line right through the property that you just, that you just rejected. He's going to then turn around and he's going to send that water right up through the third property that he owns, which was the old airport there, and on the way, all the way up to where the food line is. Now, then, if I were him, then what I would say is that since you're already running the water right through my property, that I'm going to make a case for me to have access to that water. And I don't know if that's, if that's a case that you can legislate against. I mean, a lawyer must have looked at this, and, but nobody's looking at the, the consequences of what would happen if the developer decides then that he wants the water that's going underneath his property, and he wants to have access to it. So I don't see anything in here that says that, that he's not allowed, that, that you're getting an easement that's going, taking this water right up to the food line property. But that, you're not going to have the ability to touch that water while it's, even though it's really underneath your property. So I think, I'm sorry that you already okayed this, but you might want to rethink the way that this water is traveling then, in order to keep that guy from having his hands on anywhere near where our water is going. Thanks.
Thank you. Bonnie Warren.
Good evening, Bonnie Warren, 25133 Tower Road in Hancock. One of the things I just wanted to say as a business owner, as, as far as not taking cash, that's still legal tender, as far as I'm still thinking in the United States of America, and you can't refuse somebody that wants to pay with that. I'm kind of thinking that might cause a little problem. I could be wrong, but far as I know, it's still legal tender. The other thing, at the end of your thing this evening, it says you have a closed session on real estate. And my question on that is, what is the purpose of the closed session on the real estate? Commonwealth Code 2.23712 states that during the open meeting, the motion must identify the subject of the matter, state the purpose of the closed session meeting, and cites the application exemption from the meeting requirements. That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any questions came up at the thing? The, in terms of the LR property, Jay, he, he withdrew his application, he was, it was not denied. He withdrew his application for the town council, so that, the council, the planning commission was recommended, but we, he, he pulled his application for the town to do that at present time, yeah. Yeah, I-
His application was for the Duncan property, not the LR?
No, it was for the LR property. I'm talking about his application to do the, the part, the build, the build-out behind my office, that property. No, it's the LR property.
It's the street, I thought.
No.
Backwards?
Yeah. I don't know where the Duncan. They're stripped, that's outside of town. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I think the, the problem is that there is a water line across the street from him, so it, it's difficult to deny water to anybody that's building something in the town, in the town. If there's a water line that's within somebody, you know, so I, I don't think this line is going to necessarily make, you know, there's a line across the street, yeah. Okay. No, I understand what you're saying. I just, I just wanted to, you know, to say that he, he withdrew his, his application at the present time. It certainly could come back up. Yes, yeah. Further comment, yeah? That's, that we haven't approved any other lines, yeah. Yes, that, that's, that's not, we have no application for that. We haven't approved, prescribing any water for that development. So that's not, yeah, yeah. He can't do that without our approval, yeah. Okay.
Has our attorney looked at this?
Yes, yeah, the, the-
You have approval from the attorney?
For what?
For the, for us, for where the water lines are going to go and all of that?
As far as, I don't, I can't answer that question. I don't think there was a question.
We've already approved giving them water, so now we have to help them come up with a way to connect to the water.
Yeah, there is-
I'm just asking if the attorney has had it.
No, I, I don't, I, I can't answer that question. Matt might have run it by him, but there was, they're not asking for a right-of-way or anything, they're just asking, they're not asking for, they're asking to bore under the street.
I imagine VDOT is involved.
If you looked at the, he's, he's going to require all VDOT permits, yeah. Okay, all right. All righty, let's see, public comment, mayor's comment. I've got a few more things this time, because there is no manager's report, so first thing is the, as you know, this is a notification, Christmas decorations are going up. As you can see, town people are working on that. Christmas on Hancock is coming up on the, what's the date of that, the 12th through the 14th? We're going to have a great stuff for that. I hope everybody turns out for that. I think the lights on the lawn is earlier, the 5th of the, yeah, lights on lawn at Car Street, Car Place. One other, the water, water meter replacement is ongoing. The contractor, unfortunately, earlier today, one of the contractors working on the, Joe Carter, working on that train out, train out, had a terrible accident on coming up King Street. Pretty much, you know, flipped his car into the, into the yard on King Street. He's, he was hurt pretty bad. He's in the hospital over in, it's Joe Carter. He's a contractor for HRSD, he works-
It's people who are changing our meters.
Yeah, he works for Consolidated Pipe and Supply in Albeppo, right. Yeah, this is John Borsey back here. He is the, he works for Consolidated, who are the people that are supplying our water meters. And I, I think he's going to recover, but he's seriously, he was seriously injured. Yeah, and just our thoughts are with him, yeah, yeah. If you look on Facebook, the Hancock Fire Department posted pictures of it, it's pretty, they had to cut him out of the car. So anywhere on King Street, yeah. Anyway, our thoughts are with Joe. All right, a couple other announcements. The holiday market is coming, the farmer's market is having their annual holiday market this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 at the Holiday. Some, like 30 vendors or so will be there. That's a big, big holiday market. Excuse me a sec. Okay, Debbie wanted me to notice that tax, real estate property taxes are, have gone out, some have gone out, some are going out tomorrow. The due date on there posted is, is still going to be December 5th, but we're not going to charge either interest or penalties until January 5th, because they're going out later. But we're not allowed by law to change the due date that's posted on the actual thing to you, but you'll have an extra month where no penalties or interest will be charged until January 5th. And that's clear, that's marked on there, correct? Okay, all right. So, the, a couple, a couple other things. The school, I think Mr. Mathers, Earl and I are going to work on the, getting RFPs out for the school projects. That's probably going to be an ongoing project. We're going to hopefully get some engineers involved in that to help us design a good RFP to get bids on the school projects. So that's one of his big jobs he's going to help us with as an interim. We are still one person short for the Planning Commission. If you're interested in that, please submit your name to the town to send an email to us or me. We are two people short for the BZA, which is the Board of Zoning Appeals, which hardly ever meets, but if anybody's interested in serving on that, that person is appointed by the Circuit Court. If you're interested, just put your name in the pot and I'll have to forward your name. But we only have two members on a three, five-member, or three members on a two-member, five-member committee. That's a little concerning. And my final item is something for the council. We were talking about the search process. If you looked at the plan that they submitted, Berkeley did, we need to set up a two-hour initial meeting with them, talk about the whole process, and we can't really do anything with a search until we do that. So I would like to think about setting up that either the week after Thanksgiving, at sometime in that timeframe, or the week after that. So we need to look at our calendars. I don't have any details with Berkeley about when they are available, so if we can, you know, maybe I'll just email you some times and if you can attend that, but it, it'll be a work session for a couple hours, open to the public. No votes will be taken or anything like that. We won't hear any public comment probably, but we're just, it's a work session. They're going to present their whole plan, how, go, go about it. So I was looking at sometime the week after Thanksgiving. We need to get the ball rolling on this. Any comments about that? Okay, just let me know.
The only day I can't do is December 4th.
Okay, well, I'll send out, can you do some kind of meeting thing or?
A poll.
Poll, meeting, poll thing?
They offer that in our Microsoft app.
Yeah, yeah. And I'll contact Berkeley and ask them, Drew, about when he can get somebody here.
Are you thinking evening or daytime?
It's going to have to be, I don't know, I was thinking to be evening, but that's a good question. You could, you know, everybody work though, I don't know. Can anybody make a daytime thing?
It depends, yeah.
Oh, maybe we can do that, you know, I've thought about that.
Omar, yeah.
Yeah. Well, let's get some different times and see what they can think about, okay? All right, so that's, that was it. Okay, financial report, police report there, pretty much in the package. I don't think we have anybody actually going to be able to answer any questions about that until the next meeting. Earl will be up to speed on that kind of thing. Okay. Town council comments. Ashley?
I was just interested in the, I guess we'll do, I guess the best way to say it, possible upgrades to the new park they were talking about, with the new basketball courts and stuff like that. I was reading in here some of the plans for the plant, for the plantings, the mulch. So I'm interested in, you know, kind of seeing that come to phase, come to fruition. I think that would be a welcome addition to the area.
Okay. Okay, Sarah?
Want to say welcome to Earl. Thank you again for being here and working with us and helping us through the process. Want to wish everybody a joyous Thanksgiving next week. And then a totally mundane question. What do we, I understand that there's a possibility of recovering some money by selling the old water meters, and just wondered what the, what the steps are and what the process is to make that-
He's going to work on that.
Okay, great.
And I saw the code, but yeah, I think council has to be involved with disposition.
He's going to look at that, yeah, but what the code is about that, they're, yeah, okay, we'll, we'll report back at the next meeting. There's no hurry on that.
Okay, thank you.
Cindy?
I want to echo Sarah's comments, welcoming Earl. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Where's your beer?
Joey?
As do I. I have two items I want to bring up, but I, before I do, I want to circle back to Bonnie and Casey. I agree with Casey's comment to involve the community. I think that's an excellent idea. And as far as Bonnie's code, that's code. Are we going to, I know a council member also raised a concern about, was this an item for closed session? The real estate.
Yes.
Yes. The attorney confirmed, Eric Gregory confirmed that it is.
Okay. Okay, my items. Number one, I have an email from Eric Corito, who is the director at AMPDC of our grant in the Northeast Neighborhood, and also one from Chris Governator, who's the Habitat Director. I have been involved with the Northeast Neighborhood project for seven years. I was a spark plug in the beginning with Clinton Strand and Thoma Gillespie. I will forward this, both emails to council members and the mayor. And Mr. Mathers, when I get your email, I'll also forward it to you. Basically, Eric Corito is saying, I thought it was important that we know what we've done there. We're just a little under $1 million. We have completed six out of 10 housing rehab projects in the Northeast Neighborhood. With the three-month extension that we've received, he's trying to knock out one more rehab at 2 Watson Street. Four out of six derelict homes have been demolished. I asked him about the potential for Habitat houses. And he said there are several lots possible. 15 Cross Street, which has a deed of trust of $25,000. 4 Church Street, which has a deed of trust for $15,000. 8 Watson Street, $7,500. 29 Church Street, $8,500. Now, he went into the logistics of how the town would go about receiving those lots in order to put a Habitat house on. I was here when we demolished.
9 Watson.
Was it mine? 9 Watson Street. And Lisa, maybe between your memory and mine.
It went up for tax sale, and that's why.
We purchased the lot.
Yeah.
For like, but then we also paid to have the house on it demolished. I remember that.
Yes.
Yeah. So, and then Chris has addressed that. AMPDC is currently working on obtaining a land use permit to do the sidewalk work, which was, you know, me, I'm always yelling sidewalks. And the lighting upgrades on Boundary Avenue. So then Chris Governator said that the Eastern Shore of Virginia Habitat is extremely interested in building another home in the Northeast Neighborhood. We feel that the recently completed house was a success and will help to continue to real, vitalize the neighborhood by adding an affordable owner. We would like to build another one. But property ownership is a challenge to us. While we have increased our capacity of number of homes per year, we are depleting our property inventory. So we are actively seeking new properties, and we'll be able to start building on them almost immediately. So this is just to, you know, sprinkle the seeds of, yes, this is what's been done. Yes, this is a possibility of something we could look at for the future. The next item is, I address this to Mr. Mayor, my fellow council members, and residents of Hancock. For seven years, six months, and 13 days, who's counting? It has been one of the greatest honors of my life to serve as an elected public servant on the Hancock Town Council. Tonight, I send to the mayor my resignation. Before every vote I ever cast, I have asked myself one question. Does this vote benefit my friends and neighbors and the good people of Hancock? Does it provide for the safety of our residences and businesses? Does it increase property values, not maintain, but increase? Does it provide services to the residents of our town? Only once did I feel that I failed to ask those questions. I leave hopeful and somewhat confident the council will work to transition to a new town manager. And thank you for joining us. It'd be a tremendous hope. I leave hopeful and somewhat confident the council will act for the benefit of all residents and strive to support town committees and organizations who pass the test of providing measurable benefits to town, citizens, residences, and businesses. And Hancock truly is a little slice of nowhere else. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service. All righty.
I was just going to welcome Earl, but now I'm going to say,
No, thank you.
Bye. I'm sorry to hear that you're leaving. You're welcome.
All righty. Any other comments? I think we're, we need a motion to go into closed session? No, there's no personnel issue? No.
We don't have the sheet to come out of.
I think it's right here. This one here? Yeah, this one, blank one's here.
Do you think it would be helpful if I included the tax map number of why we're going in?
If you want to, sure.
I would like to make a motion that we enter into closed session per state code. Do you have the, what, what is it? Because it's, there's a little verbiage before that. Do you know what it is? Yeah, but it's like per Code of Virginia of 1950 amended or something that we go into closed session to discuss, allowed by State Code Section 2.2-3711A3, to discuss real estate matters on parcel 085A2A0000700. 7,000, I think actually that might be.
Okay.
I got it right here. Let me double check that.
Second.
7,000, yes.
All in favor? Post? Okay. We're, all right, we're going to come back out. There won't be any votes taken or anything like that. But we're going to come back out, open session, and we'll just adjourn the meeting.
Actually, aren't you recruiting yourself?
Yeah, oh, yes. I'm recruiting myself from this closed session. Thank you. All righty.
Do you want to hand me that magic sheet?
Yeah, it's right here.